Good evening. I'll call to order the Monday, June 16th, 2025 Select Board Meeting. We'll start with the Sledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's start with the manifests. Got a get a motion to approve the accounts payable and payroll, June 9th to June 10th?
Make a motion to approve the manifests, accounts payable, June 9th, and payroll of 610, both of 2025.
I'll second.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes from June 2nd? Alan, I take it there aren't any minutes from the public hearing?
Yes.
Correct. Okay.
So if nobody has any corrections, I'll make a motion to approve the public minutes of 62, 2025.
I will second that.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
I will abstain.
And a motion to approve the non-public meetings.
Do you have a typo in that one?
Of 6225, and I believe we do have a typo under that one?
Yep. Actually, who made the motion to go in?
It was motion made by Decker, seconded by Welch.
All right.
So we'll make those corrections, so we'll make a motion to approve the non-public minutes as amended.
I will second that. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
I will abstain. Reports from assigned boards, committees, and departments. That leave Steve?
Sure. So I think everything's going well down at the transfer station. And as far as recreation, we'll let, I believe the Recreation Director will be here a little later on. We'll let her talk about the exciting things happening in the Recreation Department.
Sounds good.
So CIP, we still need to make it, we still need to have a meeting. We haven't had one. I've set a new one based on after we got attendance. Planning Board, we had a meeting last week. We had a discussion about the Bassett property, 7502 or...
Seventy dash twenty-five.
Seventy dash twenty-five. And we're having a site walk.
Where is it?
It's Channel Road.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
I know that one.
Yeah, and there's a site walk there this Wednesday. I believe the notice has been posted for that. I did have a nice chat with Chief Curry over at the Alarm March, and he's looking at doing a proposal for some changes there, so the fire station, so.
Very good. Did the CIP ever increase the threshold for the dollar amount for CIP?
Yes, and that, we did that at the end of last year, so...
Is it 15,000?
Uh, I don't recall what it was. It was a 15?
Yeah, I think it's 15,000.
Yeah, I, yeah.
The cost for projects that would go on the CIP would be anything that exceeds 15,000 right there, but was 10,000?
Yeah, yeah, so that, yeah, basically items, you know, just to reflect inflation and stuff like that.
Master Planning Committee met two weeks ago. We were very productive. We kind of took a step back for everybody to kind of reset and talk about what the purpose of the committee is and all of the facts that we're gathering right now. And then we assigned out each chapter to a group of volunteers on the committee to kind of speed the process up a little bit. But the housing chapter is probably the bulk of it, but Stratford Regional Planning is helping with that. But a lot of the other ones, they'll be able to help put together the data, but we just have to figure out what was done.
What was the community response to the question they asked?
Uh, we had put the survey out, I think, the day before our meeting, so I'm not sure where we're at right now. But I know they handed out flyers at, I think, the PLA meeting on Saturday.
Yeah, is the survey still open?
Yes.
Tim, give to 100 people, it's on their website.
Yes, the survey is available on our website. It's been shared on Facebook, and I think we're going to keep it open through the newsletter.
Yeah, it is going in on the newsletter, so there's a QR code as well as the website.
Yeah, so we should, when we meet next week, a better idea as far as what the responses are.
Nothing really to note of highway. I mean, they seem to be trying to make as much progress as they can, so I think we're still waiting. Have we heard an update on the grader?
Not yet.
No.
No, I think it was, I think it was tentatively scheduled for delivery around July.
Okay.
Early July.
That's coming up.
Yeah, that's why I figured something big like that might be on a ship making its way over here, so. Package en route, I don't know.
Charlotte?
Police Department, not a lot to report. Have a little bit of a chat with the chief about the town beach and access to it. And I wanted to remind everybody again that August 5th will be the night out, and again...
I practiced growing tonight, so...
Did you?
Yeah.
Oh, good. I, I need to practice too. I'm bringing my ringer and my husband as well. So hopefully we'll all be available for that. Just a reminder, put it on your calendar. Bring your whole family, it's free eats.
And there'll be fireworks.
And there'll be fireworks, and music as well. Quite nice, and let's hope it doesn't rain.
Yes. Anything else?
No.
Okay. Alan, the Town Administration report.
For announcements, I received last week the resignation from Alana Kenny as the land use clerk. Her last day in that position will be July 9th, so just to get the information out there, the position has been advertised. It is a part-time position with, I would say, flexible office hours during the day throughout the week, but then the evening meeting attendance is a requirement for both the Planning Board and the Zoning Board. So if anybody is interested in that, there is a link to the application on the website, or you can submit a cover letter and resume, and I will keep it advertised until we're able to find a viable candidate to fill the position.
How many hours a week?
Um, Alana's doing two office hours, two days of office hours per week plus the meeting. Realistically, I think it could be three plus. It's advertised right now for about 20 hours on average.
Okay.
And there's still a question. We've talked about maybe adding some additional office support into the Selectman's Office side so that it could possibly open up into even some more hours to help with that with some clerical duties, so. Right now, we're just going to focus on the land use, make sure the Planning Board and Zoning Board are covered for their administrative duties, and it could potentially evolve into something more, so. Excuse me. Parks and Recreation, we'll hear from Courtney later, but they have officially moved into their newly renovated space, which was formerly known as Conference Room 1, so instead of coming down the main hallway, take a right now to find them and their new space with much more room.
Does look great.
As, and she'll probably also report on Big Sam's Paint. They've completed the Four Seasons mural on the playground facing side of the community center, so that's been a great addition to this drastically white building.
Looks great.
It does.
Stands out from the road, too, when you're coming that way.
And I just wanted to give special thanks to Ben Bartlett of All-Season Landscaping. He refreshed the front island with new bark mulch, highlighting the maple trees and the memorial plaques for the four generals that were installed by his son for an Eagle Scout project last year. So that looks really good. He was also going to, I believe, add some additional grass seed to the ends just to allow that to grow up as well, and it will also help with some of the runoff.
Alan, he sent me a picture. Is that plaque new?
Which plaque?
The one that says, uh, General Thomas, so I don't...
Yep, they're in front of each individual maple tree that are planted, so those were put in last year.
But there's one now that's in bronze that says to General Bartlett.
There's one for each general.
Okay, rephrasing, Ben sent me a picture that showed a bronze plaque that covers all of them.
Okay. I don't know if a new one's been placed down there. As far as I know, there's one, each maple tree has...
Each tree, correct.
Yes.
As a bronze.
Beautiful when they were blooming.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I can't answer that, chief. And then just an update for anybody that might see in their travels. Avatar, the Town's contracted assessing firm, is out in town. They were actually out there starting on the 12th, and they'll be out there for probably the bulk of this week, just starting their data verification as part of the ongoing 2025 revaluation. They like to lay eyes on all the properties, just see if, you know, there's any additions or changes to the property that might not have been picked up by building permit or otherwise, or maybe something that's been removed, just to make sure that their assessing data is correct.
Do you think the Police Department gets sent out a nixle about that?
Yeah, we can do that. We did put a notice on the homepage of the website.
Yeah, no, that's a good idea, just so that people know.
Yeah. They'll be the ones getting the calls.
Right.
They do, they do have proper identification, both on the vehicles and on their persons. For the most part, I believe they're not getting out. I think it's just drive-bys, but still. I'll make sure the PD does that.
Thank you.
For General Correspondence, it was actually a light two weeks. There was an email received from Kelly Delaire on June 2nd, and it was looking for the written comment that she had submitted for the Stevens Hill Road public hearing. It was referenced in the minutes for that meeting that they were attached, and they weren't on the website, so we corrected that, and I responded just acknowledging that, acknowledging that the correction was made. We received Alana Kenny's letter of resignation for the land use clerk position. That was on June 6th. The Town of Raymond issued a letter on June 11th, and that was in response to my request for emergency lane status of the portion in Raymond of Mindel Road. Their Select Board had signed a resolution acknowledging Mindel as one of many private roads in Raymond that they are going to keep that way. They're not going to be expending any public money on private roads, so. The resolution had been signed, and the Board of Selectmen just reaffirmed that decision of assigning the resolution after receipt of my letter, so they just wanted to send that to let us know that that is not an option.
So we need to seek an alternative?
We need to, correct. We will have to probably seek an agreement with the private property owners if that's the option that you wish to pursue. Alternatively, we could always petition Superior Court to have the county apportion the road and determine whose responsibility it is for not only the maintenance, but also for the cost portion of it. That's Plan B.
So Plan A is to ask the homeowners?
Correct, and we would have to get all the landowners to agree.
Because this is someone that don't even live in the area.
Correct.
All right, but there's not, there's like nine total? Is that what it is?
I think there's nine actual parcels of land on the Raymond side. I think there's only four or five homes, and then plus the three for the new fail zone subdivisions. Maybe that's including that. I don't know.
I think that's including that.
I have to look back at the list. Yeah, they're primarily on the beginning portion of the Raymond side.
Okay, so how does that look as far as reaching out to them? You send a certified letter?
Send a certified letter. We would probably have to... It would probably be advisable to invite them into a meeting, see if we could get them all on board before we go through, draft a legal document for everybody to sign off on. I still don't know if that's the correct path to go, but...
Right, it's, I don't know if that's the correct path either.
I still do question expending public money on a private road.
We want to be able to support our residents, obviously, but it's definitely difficult.
That is all I had for Course Menace. That's all I had for my report.
So when, with Mindel, when do we, do we reach out to the attorney to update them on?
Yes, I think that's going to be the next step. Not that I want to spend additional legal funds on it, but make sure that that does appear to be the best approach.
Okay.
Was there any really cost to Raymond to declaring that an emergency lane? I know they say there's one.
It was in preparation for our discussion.
My understanding is that they're in some type of a legal battle with an existing private road there, and that's what precipitated the resolution to be signed. And it just happened to fall amongst the same time that we were discussing the road maintenance.
But it was specifically that road?
Yes.
And, and honestly, it could also be an issue with the beginning of, let me see if I get this right, is it Jamsa?
Yes. Yep, we did identify that there was an agreement in place with Moores.
Right, so Moores, right, so Moores, there's an agreement, but that's, I believe that's a public road.
It is now. It was accepted in 2019.
No, by, in Raymond, the Raymond part.
Yes, yes, you're correct.
Because it's got a green sign, not a red one. And so the beginning of Jamsa, and it's maybe 50 feet, I'm guessing, is also private. I believe, because I assume it's private because it's in Raymond, you know, the little bit, and then the next road.
Sax.
Sax. Sax is like right at the line, so we may want to reconsider a change there to like get rid of that piece of Jamsa or something, so that we don't have to maintain it. But that's something that we'd probably have to look with Steve to discuss.
All right, I'll add them to the list.
I mean, there's no houses there in Raymond, so on the Jamsa.
Anything else?
Nope.
And you're all done?
Helen's done.
Um, well, we're 15 minutes before our public hearing, so we can start with...
We do have some, a couple of assessing items.
Assessing.
Yep.
If you want to deal with that.
Yeah, yeah.
So there's yield taxes, so I'll make a motion to approve the yield tax assessed for map 19, Lot 1-1, and also at the same time, there's a tax levy yield on the same lot, map 19, Lot 1-1. I'll make a motion to approve both of them, yield tax on the Timbercut and, well, I guess both yield taxes, actually.
One's the certification of yield taxes assessed, and the other one is the yield tax warrant.
Yep. So I will second those, assuming that they're both recommended?
Yep.
So motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Did you say you wanted to table the town-owned tab?
Yes.
Talk about it for 10 minutes?
We can definitely talk about it for 10 minutes. What I did was I pulled together all the town-owned properties, and I focused strictly on the ones that we've acquired through a tax deed process, whether it was 15 years ago or more recently. I don't see that we have actually taxed deed at any properties since 2000, I think 2021 or '22 was the soonest. I did go back through, Dale is going, he's visiting these properties, and we'll have a report back to you for your next meeting. Just to kind of give a status update, I did look through a lot of the archives. Chris Sterndale, my predecessor, had gone through and identified any notes from research that he had done as well as to whether or not they were, you know, considered buildable or maybe questionable because they abut another town and whether they're part of another town's parcel. But with that being said, I also think, especially with new board membership amongst both the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board, it would be in our due diligence to reach out to the boards, have them review the properties as well for whether or not they see a need for them in the future, especially if we're talking about updates to the master plan and for potential conservation easement. So I want to give them the opportunity to take a look at them before we take much action on them, but I did cycle through about 10 of these properties that could potentially be disposed of. They've already been in our possession for more than three years, which is normally what we would tend to hold on to them for, to give the prior owners the ability to purchase them back for the back taxes plus a potential 10% penalty assessment, but none of these properties fall within those parameters. A lot of it is, I actually think they're all vacant. There was one that had a mention of a mobile home that was dilapidated and removed, and then another one that had some type of a structure on it that did not have much value, probably has either fallen in amongst itself or, who knows at this point. I'll have a better report on that once Dale gets out there to review it. But I at least wanted to start this discussion because if it is something that you want to potentially offer the properties either by sealed bid process or maybe have a real estate agent list them, this is, you know, peak time as people are looking for buildable lots, if there are actually any. This would be the time to get them back on the tax rolls.
Do you have those notes from Chris?
From Sterndale, yes.
I mean, that might be nice.
Those are just the ones that we've acquired by tax deed.
Right.
So a lot of the other town-owned properties, we either have, they're either in town use, whether it be here or the fire station or the Smoke Street pit and all the outlying parcels, or there's some type of a conservation easement or reason for us holding on to them. So I left those off the table because they already have a purpose.
So these are the long-hanging fruit?
Correct. And there isn't much, but there's some.
Yeah, I mean, some of them are super tiny, really, like 0.49 acres, you gotta...
Well, .05.
.05. So, I mean, at that point, does it make sense to, you know, offer them to the abutting property owners for them to then merge into their property and then just get rid of the extra parcel?
But that might be the new town beach.
Right, that could be.
35 feet.
35 feet.
That's a nice little cabin there.
Yeah, there's a nice little cabin. That's like .6 acres.
That's how the Realtors would describe that.
Nice little cozy cabin, quaint cabin, yeah. .6 acres. Utilities, nah, they're overrated. So, yeah, and if you could share Chris's notes, that would be helpful. Okay, that's on next time's agenda?
I will leave that on as a tabled item for the next meeting, and then hopefully we can get some feedback from the Planning Board and Conservation Commission and at least have Dale's notes to reference on the current status.
Still got seven minutes.
Do I go over the bid response?
Yes. I did put the bid request out. It was listed on New Hampshire Municipal's website, on the town website, posted in all the regular posting locations, as well as at the recycling center. We had three, I had three companies contact me inquiring for more information, trying to set up appointments. There was really no appointments necessary because they could visit the recycling center when they're open. I think there were two or three contractors that went out there. I checked with Alan Putnam this morning, and he said that there was two that showed up last week and spent probably a good deal of an hour just reviewing the building. Their departing comments were that the siding and the building itself is in rough shape. Based on the response of zero bids received, I would say that it was probably more than they were looking to get into. I did have the recycling center, having it painted the exterior. So it's a combination of clapboard and T-111 siding, and I think, I don't think the T-111 siding has been treated. There are also some other concerns with, you know, some punky boards and even where they store the bales of plastic and cardboard. If they have to put them in the garage because the containers are full, it's just years of pushing those back up against the wall. The wall is actually questionable as to whether or not it's properly fastened to the building anymore. So I had a conversation with Steve Rollins this morning, and he's going to go up and just do a quick evaluation on it and see if, you know, what the next step to proceed would be.
Has Dale taken a look at it?
Dale has not taken a look at it. We're probably going to have to do some general repairs to it before.
Sounds like it.
We can get somebody outside of that, you know. I anticipate that it's going, that was the reason why I put it out for bid. I anticipate that it's going to be a lot more than $10,000 to paint the exterior. I could be completely wrong, but, I mean, there is, there is quite a bit of building there once you're factoring in all the way around, especially pre-treating it.
Once Mr. Rollins goes out, do we potentially look at replacing some of the siding instead? Start there, instead of painting and then having to take...
Part of the bid requirement was, you know, anything that needed, that was identified was supposed to be repaired, but again, we didn't get any bids for it, so.
Right, if it was too big a job for a painting contractor to...
Replace walls.
But if you start tearing down, maybe you just talk about putting up like mild siding or something at some point, you know, spend 15 or whatever, 25, 30,000 to re-site it to get another period of time. I mean, a new building is still extremely expensive.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure it can be repaired, but it's just a matter of identifying what needs to be repaired and...
And if we're talking too significant of costs, it's probably going to have to be something that we either put on Warren Article or we factor into the Building Maintenance Capital Reserve Fund. That's what I was kind of hoping is that, you know, if we could fall somewhere in the 15 or less category that we could possibly make it happen this year using those capital reserve funds, but if it ends up being significantly more than, it'll be a project for '26, hopefully.
But we believe it's structurally okay. It's just repairs?
We're not sure. Sounds like we're not sure.
Yeah, the back garage area was an add-on anyway, so it's...
In practice, it don't look structurally.
I mean, generally speaking, we've gone in there, it's...
I, yeah, I mean, every time I go, I don't like inspect the building, but it doesn't seem like it's that horrible, but...
No, it doesn't. I mean, the front's boarding batten.
Right.
So not, not much go wrong there.
Right.
I did have the opportunity to look around pretty extensively at one time, and there were some questions about...
That's in your report.
There is, it is indeed.
Yeah.
But I, but we don't know. I mean, an engineer hasn't gone through, or maybe Dale would have a better idea.
Yay.
So tabling the bids for painting.
They're not really tabled. They're off the table right now.
Just have a weekend party.
They're off the table.
Did it expire at a certain date?
It did expire, um, last Thursday at 3:00.
Should we repost it? Probably not until we get somebody to look at it.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
We still have a couple of minutes. Do we want to, I know you had put in here...
We got like less than a minute.
A request for Conservation Commission for Drew Stevens.
Yes, so that, you had approved it, and I attached the minutes from the May 19th minute meeting.
Okay, we just need to sign it.
You had also signed the document, but somewhere in transit from Selectman's Office to the town clerk, it got lost, the signed copy. So Drew came in to sign his oath, or to fill out his oath of office for the Conservation Commission meeting tonight, so I took his oath based on your acceptance.
Yeah, I was going to say, we did do that.
Yes. Drew Stevens.
So if we could sign it, and then, then it'll be seven.
And it is 7 o'clock according to the very large... And it is 7 o'clock according to the very large clock in front of me.
Nice.
Can't miss that.
That's awesome.
So we're opening up our public hearing, second public hearing, parking ordinance. So Nottingham Select Board will hold a second public hearing in accordance with RSA's 31:39, 41:11, 47:17, XBII, 265I, :69, 262:32, 231:132-A for discussion and to receive public input on proposed amendments to the ordinance prohibiting parking on public ways where signs are erected. The ordinance and proposed amendments are available to view at the Nottingham Town Office and online at www.nunningham-nh.gov. So I know you, I wasn't at the meeting on June 2nd, but I know you had some discussion.
So we did split the two zones and we talked about having two separate penalties for the, you know, basically we could do a penalty based on the zone. And Ellen reflected that in this latest copy.
The only thing that I was not sure of, there was some back and forth debate about the penalty for the parking violation and a permit parking only. I did go back and listen to the first hearing and I couldn't really gauge whether we settled on a $50 or $100.
I don't think we actually settled, but...
We kind of won.
So I plugged in $100 for discussion purposes and...
And that's right. Right, we didn't actually settle.
I was pretty adamant that I thought $100 was too much and I'd be more willing to support a $50 fine than a $100 fine.
So I would argue for the $100 based on that we're talking non-residents getting the fine.
Yeah, but wouldn't you rather have something people might pay?
If they're getting a ticket, they're going to pay it.
Okay.
Not always.
I mean, it'll end up becoming a board.
Right, 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 exactly.
Which will end up expounding further, so...
Which zones does this cover, the permit parking only zones?
The Town Beach right now.
Okay.
There was discussion about the recycling center, but there, so I did look back through the recycling center. We would have to put those particular signs over at the recycling center. We do have rules and regulations in place for that location in particular.
It just says municipal permit, a permit required to go into the thing, but... So, and I think, you know, my point was it needs to be a deterrent. I don't expect there to be a lot of these written. They shouldn't, if for some reason a town resident mistakenly had a car in there, for let's say they had a rental car or something, I can say, I really live here, this is the ticket I got. They should be able to talk to the, they shouldn't deter anybody from in-town from this. When I, I just came back this weekend through Connecticut and when you get onto the interstate, there is a big sign and it's an extremely weird number, but it says $219 fine for littering. But it is bigger than the do not enter sign. It is humongous, but it's, that's a deterrent, right? I mean, they're telling you right up front, you drop a piece of paper out of the car and we catch you, it's $219. I was laughing more about the odd $219.
Right, you throw your cigarette butt out, $219 bucks.
That is, that is a significant visual deterrent. We are just trying to keep people that have, a carload of people have loaded up from most likely Massachusetts, right? Where this is a very common area for them to come up to. And they've driven all the way up here and the park's at capacity and they say, no more. Do you turn around and drive an hour and a half back or do you try to find someplace close? They come around, the entry fee, I think, Patuckaway is a per-head fee, so I think it's like a $5 fee. So if you've got five people in your car, there's 25, you're, you're ready to spend 25, 30 bucks. You've already driven up here. It's not much of a deterrent. If you're like, oh, I was hardly going to spend this anyway, we're going to still have a day at the beach, whatever. Come around the corner and it says $100, you're like, yeah, okay, maybe that's...
Maybe we should increase it to 219.
Just pay it a thousand.
I think that it is literally just a visual deterrent to try to help if, if the attendant is not there that... But I, that's it. I mean, if, if we're not really having the issue, then I don't have a real heartburn on which way this plays out. I was just trying to put a big enough scary enough number up there that you're like, eh, I'm going to keep this piece of paper in my trash or maybe I'm going to pull over and it's worth my while to stop and get that thing.
If we're not having an issue, then there's no fines to be assessed, so...
We're going to have to spend the same amount of money to make a sign that says that there's a fine, so might as well just...
Right. Then the problem comes, who's going to enforce it?
I mean, if they go through and they catch somebody or if somebody gets locked in there post gate closure, that, I don't think we're going to have...
That shouldn't happen this year.
The chief said that she's going to patrol it as she's been controlling it or if somebody calls.
We're driving in every night to make sure nobody's in there, so nobody should get locked in.
Unless somebody is walking far away from their car and, you know, doesn't hear us. We haven't had that. But I was there yesterday at 4:30 and there were two cars there that didn't have permits.
Did you go to the beach?
Yeah.
Were they at the beach?
Yeah.
Do you know they're residents?
No, I don't.
Were they New Hampshire plates?
They were New Hampshire plates.
It's 50/50.
And one had a really badly cracked windshield, too. Yeah, I think that's...
I think there's a lot of people that still don't even get the permits in town thinking like, I don't need it to go to the dump. Not really listening that they need it to go to the beach.
Or like I get one for every car, but this, a car that I would never take to the dump. So it's like, I haven't even put it on it, but...
Yeah.
When you register your vehicles, they'll hand you out one for each one, so I think. And they even, it's like if you get your windshield replaced and you go back and you say, hey, I need a new sticker. They're, they know you're a town member, like, I mean, they're not going to be like, who are you? I mean, there's a little bit of a give and take there. This is just...
Maybe an interesting footnote since I had to get a new sticker. The new stickers are correctly blue, but the wrong date on them.
Yeah, they say...
Yeah, there's a problem with that.
We're not the only town that has that issue.
No.
But Tim, this is a public hearing. Should we open it up for public comment?
All right.
Never did ask if anybody...
I was...
He was just catching him out for the, where we got here.
I know, I know. I'm just saying.
Well, I like the idea of the truth, frankly.
So do we want to have more discussion or do you want to open it up to public comment now?
We can open it to public comment.
Okay. Steve, would you like to step up for public comment?
I will do this for Steve.
Oh, thank you. Talk last, yeah?
Talk last, yeah.
Thank you. I...
Name an address.
Steve's 32 Dollar Dam Road, Nottingham, New Hampshire, 03290. I've been listening to the board and especially what Matt said about Tamworth. I was, it does stop, I mean, $100 was stopping. So I think that $100 is useful, again, for non-residents. So that's my view.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Captain Marshall, 189 Old Turnpike Road. So I do have the town of Tamworth, which I had submitted to Ellen, and they do impede a $50 fine. It wasn't $100, Steve. It was 50 for Tamworth.
No, it was $100 for Tamworth.
It's right here. It's 50.
Okay.
And I pulled this recently off the, within the last couple of months. So I think the 50 is, is fine, but it's a parking penalty. So if someone's stuck in there, but the, the gate, are you also going to incur that fine? Because you're technically not parking. They could just say, oh, I just swung around or something like... I don't know if that's like an iffy, just something to bring up that you didn't catch some parking because they're at the, the gate. So just, I don't know if that's technic, a technicality or not. I wondered, I did meet Navea, I went last Thursday. She's very sweet, but has anyone asked her? I know she's clicking. She's just asking if you're Nottingham resident. She's counting. I was there with my grandkids. So she clicked three for us. If there have been any people that are non-residents, did anyone think to ask her before the...
She hasn't had it?
I think she's referring to Courtney.
She has turned herself away.
Okay, so that's good, so. And when I was there, someone had come in on a bike and they're giving them a warning, just letting them know, because I think it's new this year. I think people could walk in or ride their bikes to the beach last time. So she is letting them stay, but just telling them, you know, since they already came this far. And I do understand they don't, you don't want kids being unsupervised at the beach because there is no lifeguard on duty. And I did find out that there were some kids who were on the dam and they suspended them from the beach for a year. So I think that's a good deterrent for those kids who aren't going to listen. So she had, she had said that, that they, the police had come as she had gone, she told them not to go there. She went to the restroom and they went there anyway, just as the police were coming up. So they, they got suspended for a year from the beach. So I think that's a good deterrent for them that I don't know if you guys were aware of. And there is only one porta potty and not two like in the past. And the signs are very visual when you go in, the new signs about being respectful to the private homeowners. There's got to be, gosh, like six or seven of them that should drive in. So it's, someone said they can't miss them because they are right there asking people to be...
Oh, they'll still say it.
They really can't miss them. So someone must have cleaned up the poison ivy because there was no poison ivy on the pass. I didn't see any green algae. I'd have reported it all off dam, but I didn't see anything on the beach. So it looked really cleaned up as well. They could still use a couple of picnic tables, but I think $100 might be a little steep for our rural little town. And even Tamworth, they're probably the same size as Nottingham and they only impede a $50, so. And I don't think people who drive all the way up from Massachusetts are going to even find that beach. There's, I mean, you, it's, even if you go in a little bit, you have to keep going down this windy road. They're going to be, there's nothing down here. They're not going to find that beach unless they know it's there.
Well, it used to be posted on the internet.
I know, and since they took it off, I think that's, that's helped and it's called a trail and not a road, so. I'm for the 25 or 50 like you, Steve. I think $100 is just a little, a little too much, but that's just my input, so. That is it.
Thank you.
If you Google Nottingham Beach, it takes you somewhere that looks like in Nottingham, England.
Oh, probably, yeah.
That's good. Good.
What are your thoughts?
Well, I, you know, I've waffled, as I do. I agreed with Steve last week. I thought it was high. I looked around at some other towns and they're much lower fines. But I am aware that people are ignoring the rules and there hasn't even been much weather to use the beach. Yeah, yeah. It's, and there's already been, you know, people just paying no attention. So I am leaning towards the $100 shock value of putting that up there as being, ooh, we might get caught, we might not, but whatever, we, we don't want to pay that $100, so I have come to agree with Matt. I think that's...
Yeah, I am for the $100 as well because there should be no impact to any residents.
Right. Because I think we're being very friendly to the residents. If they don't have the permit, we're asking them to go get one, but she's letting them in if they have their registration or license that shows they're Nottingham residents, so...
Yeah, I think we're trying to get into a learning process, but it is interesting on Tamworth because like their $50, whatever, like theirs is right off. Is that four?
16.
16, thank you. I was...
It's easy to enforce there.
Right.
Right.
Well, at the same point, though, you also have a higher, there's more people going by that might try to take advantage of it. But it is right there. You take a left, you're in the other area, so that is an interesting point.
It's my understanding that the Tamworth spot is actually very small, too, if they're parking. That's...
It's not that small. It's all right.
It just seemed that way.
I pulled over and disregarded the $100, the $50 fine and had lunch in my casket. I'm not really parking, but...
Yeah, I'd support the $100 as a deterrent, simply as a deterrent.
And if, if somebody has a real issue, if for some reason, you know, Robin's daughter or whatever came up and their car was broke down and she's like, we had to take their car, I didn't have their sticker today. Okay, that's a, you were a town resident, you were there. They, I'm sure the police would work with our local folk to make sure it's not...
And people can always contest tickets and police don't very often go to court to pay back for tickets, so...
$100 parking ticket, yeah.
But, yeah. We've gone for 15 minutes. Do we want to, do you have anything else to add about...
So any other amendments to any other pieces of the ordinance? So the $25 fine for a parking violation in a no parking zone is so much lower because they're going to have to pay to have their car towed anywhere.
Towed as well, right?
Potentially.
You know what a bigger problem is? It's the school parking to pick up after school. I drove by, it's now like extended, like a half mile down the road and I'm like, this is so dangerous.
Yeah.
Won't be long, we won't need a bus service.
That's not for today.
So do we want to entertain if the discussions, the more further discussions are going on?
So do we close the public hearings? Are we then discussing?
Yep. Yep, so we'll close the public comment on the Nottingham ordinance for prohibiting parking on public ways where signs are erected.
Okay. So do we need a motion?
Yeah, make a motion and vote on it.
Yep.
Okay, I will make a motion to accept the Town of Nottingham ordinance number 01-001, prohibiting parking on public ways where signs are erected, including updating the date for today. I guess.
June 16th, as amended June 16th.
As amended June 16th, yeah.
Got a motion?
I'll second it.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye. Steve Walsh, aye.
John Decker, yea.
Tim DeBrio, yea.
Aye, Charlotte, aye.
Does that mean the $100 is passed?
Correct. Motion carries for one. Moving on.
Now, we need to sign the official one. So do we sign the official one after that corrections typed in the, the date? Okay, so next, next meeting, whatever.
Yeah, we'll put your signatures on it. It will be effective today, so I'll just make sure the web versions are updated.
That's two Nixles.
You'll have to order the signs too. So you'll have a new sign at the beach entrance and then a couple down at the beach, at the parking lot.
One more sign, three more signs.
Lot of signage.
There are a Tesla song about that. Courtney, did you want to come up and talk about Marston?
Right.
How are you, New Digs?
Very wonderful. We have so much space, so much storage. We are two weeks away from summer camp and in a much better spot than we were. So we are very, very thankful and very appreciative. It's been a lot of work. We're tired, but we're ready. Never thought summer camp would be considered a break, but it is. Very excited with the mural as well. That was an amazing experience. And to be able to talk with our artist and talk with his family and, and it was really, really cool. So if you haven't seen the murals, I would highly recommend going to check them out. They are wonderful. They are very New Hampshire. They are very Nottingham. They're beautiful. And again, what an awesome experience for those who got to come and paint. I know Robin came with her... I know Robin came with her grandkids and wish I had a little bit more turnout for that, but the rain on Saturday ruined us again.
Who'd have thought we'd have rain on a Saturday?
I know, so honestly, but very, very happy. And we get paving coming up tomorrow on the walkway. We covered the murals so that nothing can get on those and ruin those and create more work for us. So very excited. We got a lot of fun stuff coming up and it'll be all ready and buttoned up for summer camp. So can't wait to see how the kids see and have fun here this year. So we're really excited, so thanks.
Do you have signed up for summer camp?
We have over a hundred and thirty different kids. So that typically will be about sixty to eighty on certain weeks. But yeah, full house, which is great. And we have so many wonderful staff and with kids this, you know, during this year and the past couple of years, a lot of people want to work part-time. So we kinda have to go a little bit overstaffed, so we don't ever really have a cap for camp, which is really great. We just gotta think about those rainy days and, and the noise that we create down this poor hallway. But they're fun noises mostly.
It's a fantastic service for a town this size.
Yeah, we love it. And it's, we may have to make changes every year, but they're all good changes, positive changes, and the kids have a great time, so we're excited. It's time, hopefully it stops raining. So thanks for having me tonight to talk about Marston. I am here today with a little bit of a request to get a green light for a new set of conceptual designs for the change at, at Marston. Do all of you, have all of you seen the old plans?
It's been a while.
I have, I printed them just in case, and I figured I'd hand them out. Pass it along, just so you can see kinda what was done years and years ago. When I first got here as director, I wasn't really involved in the process. It was really kind of volunteer-driven. We had asked the town for, I think it was a hundred thousand dollars for tax dollars, and as well as they took a hundred thousand dollars for, from Rec revolving to get the project started.
It looks nothing like...
It's changed.
Well, ish.
Ish. We did, I did have a conceptual, or not a conceptual, I did have an as-is plan done, just so we had a plan to go off of, because things had to have changed. Between, you know, different volunteer sets of hands and, you know, just over the years, things weren't put necessarily where they should have been, but things had to be changed. So we have those as-is plans done, which is great for us to be able to kinda like pivot and, and talk about something different moving forward. So that's, those were the original conceptual plans that I believe were fine-tuned. Gosh, we had the original study done in two thousand and fourteen, I think. So it was a good ten years ago that that document was kind of pulled from. And I know in two thousand and fourteen, they did a study from New Hampshire...
Listens.
Listens. Some key points that came from that survey or that, yeah, survey, was basically that Marston property should be a place for everybody. Community wants clear goals and achievable steps. Marston property should be a place with multiple uses, appropriate parking and keeping it safe. That came from that big study. We've also done several different surveys over the past couple of years. We did a makeshift needs assessment in twenty twenty-three through twenty-four. I'm almost done compiling all that data. We've had a lot going on, so, and I'm not a stats person, so doing my best. But the only real big change as far as like big needs that we noticed was the pandemic of pickleball. So, or, yeah. So that, we have a lot of people in town that are into that. And if you've heard, it's all over the country. People are, love it. So that was kinda something that we wanted to represent in this newer plan. Now, the newer plan isn't really that new. It's a lot of the same concepts from the old plan. Just moved on to areas that have already been cleared and developed. So I met with Dale to kinda go over like, you know, how far away from the river we need to be from certain things. The tennis court is kind of in the same area as it was. I believe on those original plans, the tennis court, it was two tennis courts or two courts. I would like to change that direction and pivot and kind of go one tennis court, one basketball court, but that also is a multi-use with pickleball lines. So we're talking two courts, about the same size, tennis is a little bit bigger. And those would be in the new plans that I attached, my drawing plans. One across from the, the bus parking and one on the other side of that bus parking. And then additional parking, dirt lots are fine. In fact, most places in our area have dirt lots and they are fine. And that is less in maintenance down the road. And the next phase would be incorporating that playground piece. As you know, playgrounds are very expensive, so that would take a little bit more time to get to a pavilion or a shade structure. I'm really loving my shade structures back here. They get the job done. They're not quite a shelter-in-place type of thing, but they're a great source where kids can get shade. It's like, it's a desert out there, kinda like it was here. So that's kind of, I've outlined kind of our phases. But the, the reason why I'm here too, to explain and why it's such a rush is because our new Friends of Parks and Rec group is a five oh one C three. They were established last November. And we have a very excited president, Jim, who is like really gung ho about kinda helping us with these bigger projects that we may not ever get to. They're kind of that original plan, as much as more baseball fields, and I've talked with Tim and the N Y A about that, but more baseball fields, that, that's a lot of money. And that's also constructing and taking down all those trees that are there, too. So we can kind of start progress back on this property if we just shift focus to maybe some more attainable goals. And that's kinda what I'm showing you tonight. Any questions about...
One thing is softball field and the baseball field are reversed.
Oh.
Just, just to...
Yep. Sorry about that.
No, that's okay, I just wanted, because I know they'd most likely be using this to submit for any type of grant.
So this one's, this one's baseball?
Yeah.
And this one's softball?
Correct. And I love the idea of a parking lot over by the softball field.
Yeah, I really think...
There'd be a lot of road parking there as it is.
And they shouldn't be.
They shouldn't be.
What's on this original plan in that area?
It's just trees.
Trees.
This square thing here.
That's a community garden.
Oh, that's a community garden?
Break it down the road. Be like on the other side of that, and I guess it's kinda in that same corner.
It's in that same spot.
Really, the community garden should be over where the water is.
I agree.
Right, right.
And we actually do kinda, we have a start to a community garden. It's, it's more of a butterfly pollinator garden that was done by a scout. And I do have a volunteer who is a part of FONPAR that's helping kinda revamp that. That's also where disc one or the whole one for disc golf is gonna kind of be. So we wanna kinda pretty that area up, too. And that is a lovely, I mean, we want to attract pollinators and butterflies. That was a big, that was a big issue back when Marston first became. There was a lot of milkweed on that property that ended up getting rid of. So we wanted to kind of put that back in that property to attract those things.
Would it make sense to keep the tennis court and basketball, pickleball stuff in the original location closer to the road, just so that they're more compact to each other? Just for future expansion or whatever?
If we do that, there is a real, we'd have to bring in a lot of fill for that area. There isn't enough room side to side right now. And again, that's kind of, we're getting close to the river. So we don't want to get too close to the river. There's also a nice tree buffer there. And if pickleball is back a little bit on that property, that's a good thing.
Right, yeah, because it, yeah, I know pickleball's very loud, apparently.
They're very loud. That has been a complaint in other areas. Again, the buffer would help, and the fact that we don't have lights is actually a bonus, because then people can't play all night long.
Put the pickleball way down here.
I know. That would be in the sand pit.
Good argument against lights, yeah.
Yeah, and it kinda, it, so, I mean, for now, I mean, lights are probably very expensive, so, but that...
The electricity there is bad enough and there's nothing running.
Yeah. So that's why we chose to kinda move it that way. And move the pavilion kind of over there, taking away minimal tree work. It's a lot of very fresh, young trees there, so the, the removal process of where that pavilion would be is, is minimal.
But so the, I guess if you're thinking about phases, I guess the yellow would be sort of like your phase...
Yep.
One for the next year to two, and then the pink is future.
Do we have some idea from the president of FONPAR how much money we're talking about in that grant? He mentioned it was a matching funds.
Yeah, so this is a grant that we applied for, I can't remember when exactly, but it was definitely over five years ago. We applied for it, we got it, but it was based on the entire property. And what happened was the archaeological study for that whole footprint was like over fifty thousand dollars. So we decided that we couldn't go forward, because that would have drained Rec revolving at the time. This is a grant that is a federal grant. The money is there this year. We don't know what future will look like with federal monies and particularly the conservation stuff. So it's a matching, it's a matching grant, anywhere from fifty thousand to five hundred thousand. We wouldn't be going that high for phase one. The idea is to keep it around less than two hundred thousand. And the matching portion is that we can use volunteer hours, we can use like employee time...
Kind.
In-kind donation, like all of that stuff we can use as a matching.
Cash raised, okay.
Doesn't have to be all cash, which is why this grant is doable for a lot of communities.
Who's running the grant?
You're looking at her.
New grant, no.
Oh, who's running it?
No, who are you, who are you applying to?
It's the state of New Hampshire.
Oh, good, okay. What's the county government?
No, it's the Land Water Conservation Fund grant. And this would, this is also like, it keeps this property in recreation use forever, which is what this property is for and why it was established as well, excuse me. Where are my notes on that? So, and all grant payments are made on a reimbursement basis. So as of right now, Jim wanted me to let you all know that we are predicted with a couple of the last fundraisers that we have raised around ten thousand, which is really amazing for the first couple of months. I truly, since I've been here, I've been kind of a naysayer with volunteer work, and it's been really hard for us to get volunteers. But with the establishment of this specific committee, it's had its up and downs, but we've been able to save a ton of money on our office renovation with FONPAR members, the garden work. They really have stepped up to help the department and the town. So it's something that I wouldn't want to take a risk like this if I didn't believe that they could come close to raising this kind of money. The, the biggest thing is that, you know, we've made a lot of improvements this year with Rec revolving, which has been wonderful, but I can't tap out Rec revolving when we have staff and we have people that depend on jobs here. And it's also revolving, right? So if something happens with camp or aftercare, we can't guarantee that that money's always gonna come in. So with FONPAR and Marston being, I don't want to say it's out of reach, but those goals and those big projects are a little bit out of reach to us right now, especially with the impact of the budget and what's happened the last couple of years. It really would make sense to let FONPAR help and try to go for something to, to keep progress happening at that facility. Again, it looks really good down there. If you haven't been down there, the ball fields look great, the dugouts look great, thanks to N Y A. You know, things are looking really good. I want to get adults down there. That's the big draw, is to also get our adult population down there and active and, and enjoying it as well, so.
So the only, I haven't made it to a Friends of Nottingham Park, so I think everything here is, is great. Definitely like the extended parking lot, because you get one or two games going, very similar to what's happened out here, back to back. And that entire parking lot was full with people parking on the grass and they were on...
On the street.
On the street at the same time. And, which is great. That is, you're getting a ton of use down there, which is what we want to see. You know, people like, is it being used? It's, it's being used very heavily in certain times of years.
Agreed.
My concern would be if somebody comes to go play pickleball and then they go and there's literally three hundred, not three hundred. But there's, you know, the parking lots are just completely jammed. I don't, if, location would be, I mean, this, the adding of this other dirt parking lot for the softball field would help. I'm just spouting some things if you make it to these meetings, things to think about, or at least dedicating for pickleball, which, or basketball.
Yeah, I think we're gonna have to definitely do some scheduling, some signage for that. It will extend, you know, programming for us as well to help with maintenance. I think maintenance is another big question that people have, which is totally understandable. My goal is to not go to taxpayers. Marston has been a hot topic item for a lot, and so we, we want to try and use Rec revolving funds to keep that property maintained and upkept. But there are things like mowing and irrigation and things that are town property that also benefit from our general fund budget. But I agree, I think, I think that the parking is, is, is number one, because that is our biggest issue right now, I would say. And with the addition of disc golf and those courts, we'd probably need, we definitely need more parking over there, so that people can use it at the same time.
Thank you for addressing that maintenance issue. You know, that was one of my questions. And to look at this original drawing, it, it scares me a little bit, how ambitious it is. And that would be my question, it's like, gee, can we have nice things, but then we have to take care of them? This seems much more realistic. It's a smart plan, I think.
I think the original plans to, I don't know if the school wasn't consulted or involved in it, but it was to have school ball fields down there and a track for the school, but the school can't bus people, the kids down there, you know, for practices.
They said they were basically just looking, you know, crazy things that they knew the town had been missing. Can we show that we could put them here? And they could, and I think I even remember some of the meetings, they're like, we don't really expect a track here, like we don't have a football team.
Right.
But we have a lot of flag football games, very big in the fall. So if you were able to expand the open green space more up instead of, I mean, it seems to work out pretty well right now.
Yeah, and, and I'm trying to expand that, that open green space that we do have. I would love to be able to get irrigation back there, just so we have grass and another multi-use. We did have a lot of volunteers last year help flatten that area out, because it was really, really bumpy and rocky. It's not great, it still isn't that great. The grass is taking its time coming in back there, but it does give people just that area to recreate and to do things. And lacrosse has been using it, and soccer has reached out about using Marston too this year. So we're all working together to try to make it accessible for everybody.
I think this is a smart new plan. I mean, it does seem realistic and accessible.
The demand is there for all three of those sports.
Sure.
The challenge is gonna be scheduling, but...
The challenge is gonna be scheduling.
The, the flat top up here is gonna be two, what, what's gonna happen with the flat top up here?
So that flat top, we are so excited to get repaved it. One is just, it has been a huge safety issue for us. We do all of our, that's like our central point to all of our events and our, we do the senior picnic out there and stuff like that. So that's great, but I would love to get, if there's room for two hoops, that would be cool. But I'd love to just at least put one hoop in there, so that kids at summer camp, kids who are here watching their, their siblings play ball can also just shoot around. We had one of those like backyard hoops there one time and just got annihilated in like three weeks, because it just didn't hold up. But it got used, which was great. I had teens coming and playing. It's just hard to access... It's just hard to access the school hoop because it's so far away. Also, all those like N Y A and Rec Sports, they happen here. So to have just that other option would be great.
And then you, you can have an outdoor pickleball, again, you're multi, you're painting the lines inside. Can you put one or two there?
Probably, it's bigger than I think. I would probably try one, because that hill scares me a little bit.
Oh.
Um, so, I don't want anyone rolling down the hill. Um, but yeah, so that, that could be an option, especially a temporary option, but they can't play during summer camp.
No, I agree. I think there's enough, it seems like your enrollment has been high enough, and same thing for other kids if they are not in summer camp, but they want to do basketball.
Right.
There's, I mean, it depends.
It would just be great to have another option.
It would.
Yeah.
I'm confused. Are you talking about another option here?
Yeah, that area, that flat top area, right outside the gym.
Oh.
That's getting repaved.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, yeah. Hopefully a hoop coming soon.
Uh, so what do you need from us for this?
I basically just need-
Support.
Support, um, to be able to move forward. The letter of intent is due on June twenty-seventh, I believe, and I have a quote in for about four thousand to get a new conceptual design made, which I do think is a necessary step if we are going to apply for grants and other sources of grant.
Oh, you mean this, this wouldn't be acceptable?
I don't think so. As much as I love my artwork, I would, I would love it to be a little bit more official.
I love the big arrows, I mean it.
Yeah, plus I'm not a surveyor, so I want to make sure a survey company goes out, make sure we check with the wetlands, and we make sure that we're doing things the way that we should be. And that way we have a solid plan to move forward and that we're all kind of on the same page. I think that was my biggest thing as well, so. I guess the friends are looking for the okay and a, a plan to be able to move forward. I'm looking for your approval to be able to give them that okay. And then the next steps will be, hopefully we raise money and hopefully we can accept it. But, yeah, we didn't think this grant was gonna open, and then it did last minute, so that's why the hurry up and wait.
Because I know the old Marston committee, we tried-
Tried everything we could.
Get it back together and just couldn't get people to commit and meet, and so I-
It's so hard. It's, yeah.
You've got a group that's willing to continue.
Yeah, yeah, and, you know, they're looking for, you know, looking at sponsorship opportunities and really like to work hand in hand with the department and the town, and really support kind of these big, out of reach things that don't want to ask taxpayers for.
And they put like, I think it was eight pickleball courts in, and Lishfield is much bigger than us, and it is packed.
It's wild. The demand is crazy, isn't it?
It would be nice to be able to keep our people in town.
Yeah.
They, they leave us, we play in our little gym here, and it's, it's quirky, it's, if you put two courts in there, it's definitely smaller, and we get our complaints, but it works and it keeps them active, and then they leave us and go to Lee and other surrounding towns. So, um, it would be nice to keep people here and give them that opportunity here.
Good. Now, your conceptual, are you gonna be able to kind of like more hard set in your-
Disc golf.
Disc golf a little bit through there, just so that it, I mean, I guess it's not that hard to move a, a course.
It's not.
You just pull it up and reset it if you needed to.
And I think that we want to keep a little bit, we're still, and that's another volunteer project, so that project has taken a little bit longer than we would have hoped. Um, we do have the baskets here finally, so we are hoping to get nine holes by fall in. Um, but what I like about the fact that we can move it is if any of these have to change a little bit, we can slightly adjust that plan if we have to. Um, I don't want to, um, but it's, you're talking one little thing of concrete and a, and a move versus you can't move a whole tennis court, right? So, um-
That's the beauty of the disc golf. It's like very portable.
It is. And what I really like about this new plan is that Nottingham is very nature-based, right? And I, and I just felt the old plan was just leveling all of those trees and all of those things that make our town wonderful, so allowing that disc golf course to stay and be a part of this new concept, I think really will just enhance the beauty of our town.
Which is great to add, other than baseball and softball.
Great, and I love those too. I'm a big softball player myself.
It's good to get older people down there and see what's happening and have more intergenerational, yeah, I think it's-
There's no doubt, down the road, if we need to do something different, then-
Right.
I think-
Just do it.
Yeah, the hardest thing is like, I mean, you can move a playground, but you want to generally be like, we're gonna put the playground here, I mean,
Yep.
The water supply is where it is, so if we ever think we're gonna have a bathhouse or a something, I mean, you would ever, you know, but at least the water supply and the pavilion right next to it makes sense if you're gonna have any type of cookout or anything like that, so.
Yeah.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure, Steve.
Yeah, I heard the, the two courts, when would, the two courts will go in before the pavilion or?
Yep, so the courts are in kind of my, I'll call it phase two, because we've already kind of had phase one. Um, it would be a tennis court, the multi-use basketball and pickleball court with the extended parking lot.
Okay.
And then hopefully our disc golf, but that we are, we're not including in the grant, because we have those funds.
And then just for the, I know pickleball is big, but then if somebody tries to come play basketball, if basketball's always gonna be pushed aside, like, do we have a lot of actual tennis players, or can tennis basketball be your mixed use?
Um-
I don't, I know that there's a bigger sizing and tennis is very specific.
Tennis is very specific. Um, so I am hesitant. There's also a grant that we are chasing with the USA Tennis Grant, and that is a dedicated tennis court. Um, so if you do the multi-use, that may not make that grant.
Yep.
Also, there's things that have to be installed in that tennis court, like the outdoor net and the footings and things like that. Also, the basketball court with those measurements would fit three perfect pickleball courts inside it. So, three courts is really great, because when you get a lot of people that show up, only two can play, only four people can play at a time. So you'll have people being able to play. Um, so we felt that was a better, I also, with the time of one pickleball player's play, I really feel like, you know, that basketball court would be used probably more when
All right.
Baseball and softball's happening or stuff like that.
Okay.
Um, but, you know, we are definitely gonna run into scheduling problems, so my plan is to kind of ask other towns how they approach that. I know Portsmouth has like, they have a huge crowd that goes down and plays, and they can take over. Um, especially if word gets out that we have open courts and things like that, but we also want to still be able to, you know, charge our minimal fee, still have that program, probably have a program lead down there. Um, what's great about tennis is that we have two high schools that have tennis, but we have no tennis at our middle school, right? So to allow some programming there would be great, um, but really it comes down to scheduling and making sure everyone plays nice.
Future Tim says good luck with that.
Yes. And I'm a little nervous about that stuff, but I, I honestly think we, we got a really good group of folks that, that get the multi-use point of this property, so.
But it sounds like, if, if that really does take off, I mean, paving a spot to put another, technically three, another multi-use next to it in would not be that bad.
Nope.
The land's flat, it's just gonna put the pavement down and the lines and hoops, but-
Yeah.
Okay.
So the next step is, well, hopefully you get the grant, and then we'd have to allocate funds from Rec revolving.
Possibly. Depends on-
How much?
How much we get with fundraising. Um, I am, obviously, I think Rec revolving is an easy fit. That's what we were gonna use in the past, so if we do have some money to help with that project, that would be the first place. But yeah, so next step is the letter of intent, and then I will find out if we, you know, get through to that next round, which we've already done it once, so hopefully that's a good sign that we can do it again. Um, then by the end of the, I think by fall would be when grant is due. Um, friends will help me write that grant. And then it's, it's a process. We'll have to go through and look at our, we had an alteration of terrain permit that expired, and we have some things that we'll have to work with the state on. Um, but I really think scaling this project down into kind of two tiers is more achievable than going for it all at once.
And even having the expired permits is helpful.
Exactly. It should be an easier process.
Right.
Yeah. So that's kind of my homework for the next couple of months, to make sure that we have what we have.
Right, as much, yeah, yeah, just, you're gonna say, this piece or whatever.
Right.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
So you guys, support?
Yeah.
We really need the motion. We're not expecting anything or accepting anything.
Thanks, Bernie. That's fun.
Thanks for bringing the old one, too. That was really helpful.
Yeah, no problem. Appreciate it.
And all this stuff is available still on the website, too, on the Marston link, so.
Yep, yep. And I'll try to post all the new stuff that we get on the website as well, so people can follow along if they're interested. And also Fond par is always looking for help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thanks.
Next on the agenda is policy and procedures. We're gonna review the purchasing policy first. So I read through it all, I mean, we read through this last year, too. Um, are there any suggested changes that you have, Ellen?
Um, the only thing that we had tentatively discussed in the past, and it wasn't even at the full board level, it was probably just individually based on the C I P change. The C I P is going to start capturing assets that have a value of fifteen thousand dollars or more. Really, the question is, is with inflation, do you want to perhaps consider increasing the expense approval letter? Right now, anything over ten thousand dollars requires a competitive sealed bid process. Between five and ten thousand dollars, department head and myself are responsible for obtaining at least three quotes or bids, depending on what the service is.
I'd be happy with fifteen.
Yeah, I think have it in line with C I P.
It's probably fine, yeah.
I, I mean, for the most part, with a lot of the major purchases, like the police crews or the things that we're doing consistently, most of that is acquired through the state bid process, which negates this process anyways, but, um, in the event of a service, sometimes it is a little bit tricky. I mean, it, it comes down to even putting up to bid the, the painting, the exterior of the recycling center, you know, is it closer to the ten, or is it more realistically the fifteen? Whereas I could call local painters and say, hey, would you be interested in providing a quote for this, rather than having them go through a competitive sealed bid process?
So I looked at some of our surrounding towns and their purchasing policy, and they're all ten thousand dollars.
Yes, I, I did notice that as well. I went onto my manager's feed today, and I, I think the most, the most updated one that I could find that anybody had put on the list serve was updated in twenty-two, and it was very similar to ours.
Right.
So it's not something that's updated regularly.
But they all had ten thousand.
Because everybody, that's what we do. Instead of reinventing the wheel, we borrow each other's policies.
So they could all be different for years. No, I think as long as you're still keeping it the same as far as getting quotes and bids.
So we're just moving the middle one. It'll be zero to five is the same, and then it'll be five to fifteen. Department head in town, and then above fifteen, select board R F P in bids. Am I understanding what we just said correctly?
Yeah.
Uh, we're just moving the line up to fifteen thousand, so the, but, but before it needs to come before the board.
Okay. Thank you.
Was there anything else, Ellen? Want to change?
I mean, it says all purchases in excess, it'll be a fifteen. Shall be made with competitive sealed bids, shall be awarded the lowest response, why do they highlight responsible? Responsible bidder, or bidder that provides the best value to the tenant.
Because it may be a low bid, that's not- Right. They may have like, bad reviews or something, bad reviews on Yelp.
Mm-hmm.
So is it just, is it those four places? That we changed ten thousand to fifteen thousand?
Do we, under, under five for, is there any changes?
We're covered under the state and federal bid, bid list for most of the larger purchases, like I had stated. Um, the only thing that, that came up, especially when it, and I'll use the, um, the side-by-side that was purchased by the police department as an example. They had a very specified unit that they were looking for that would fit their department needs without actually having to have it priced out or specked out as police equipment, um, because that came with a higher price tag. So that would be the only other item that I would question, that we should put some type of a clarification in there. I mean, we do say there's a specific type or brand of supplier part necessary for acceptable operation of a machine or device as required by warranty or contract on a machine or device. That's item number three under section five, but in, in that instance, because it was a specific unit, we could have priced it out amongst other Polaris dealers, but we're dealing with suggested retail price for that, so.
I mean, I don't know if you, if you have to add something, or, I mean, because we can make an exception, so maybe-
You can make an exception.
If it was presented that way, that, hey, this is why, and we noted that we're making an exception to the policy, I think.
So that's the only thing that's, that's really come up as a challenge in trying to explain. But I agree, as long as it's presented to the board and you're given the option to, or you're, you're giving the department head the option to proceed without the competitive bidding process, then I think we're fine.
So there is, I was looking at, this is the town of Deerfield, and then in theirs, they have sole source purchase, the board's like, when it determines that there's only one possible source for proposed purchase that may waive the bid process. So I guess something, yeah, but I guess adjusting that.
No comparable.
Right, but that's more of a service. This is a purchase. So I guess using that second bullet and just because that's more of like a unique part or a unique service. This would be a unique purchase. Or do you think it would be fine just leaving it as is and just maybe just recognize it and make an exception?
It's product or service?
Oh, yeah.
I'm like, what would you change in that wording?
Equipment.
Right, product or service is there, so.
Oh, I guess this would even be different.
Hmm?
Because it's not that there's only one source. Because if you're thinking about this, just this one unique situation with Polaris, there is comparable.
Right, there's comparable sources.
Numerous dealers.
Right.
Well, there's, there's numerous Polaris dealers, plus there are different vendors.
Kawasaki.
You're right, Kawasaki, Articat, Yamaha, you know, it's Bombardier.
I just think recognizing the exception in my mind would make sense.
Right, and I think we, that's covered down, that last bullet.
Yeah, it's on fine.
Yeah, it's good.
So then you'll amend that with an approval at the next meeting?
And then-
You got something else, Matt?
Just rereading, so seven is major construction projects, which we were speaking of painting, painting would have, this is for things over twenty, because you kind of mentioned fifteen earlier, but twenty is the threshold for reconstruction, where we have to have full bid?
That's interesting, that, that's interesting, that there's twenty called out there. Because that's, doesn't fit with the other stuff.
And this is re, the, I'll read it, "In the case of contracts for the construction, reconstruction, alteration, repair, or refurbishing of real property, where the estimated cost of the project is in excess of twenty thousand dollars. A determination of responsibility of interest economy may influence," so. And then again, it limits on how you bid on this one, too. Invitations can be limited only to firms which, in our determination, have been pre-qualified based on, we think they can handle the job. based on, we think they can handle the job, down through here. But I'm just, this says 20 here, but then we were talking about, if it gets higher, do we need to kick something to CIP? I'm just making sure we don't have a cross threat on pricing here. Or make sure that we leave it in our realm if it's under.
I think it's still going to fall under the bid requirements. It's just...
Different type of bidding. It's not sealed bidding, because of the type of project that it is.
You're looking for specified contractors.
But we were trying to do sealed, we were trying to do sealed bidding for painting, correct?
Correct.
Which this...
But this is, this is major construction projects in excess of $20,000 having to not only go through the sealed bid process, but also be limited to firms that have been pre-qualified.
Yeah.
So you're talking more along lines of like an AIA technical document with project specifications and...
I mean...
So this is, we have to replace all of the walls at the recycling center?
I mean, like, the walls, like, if they got to come in and, if that full job came in at 20,000, you would want them to have insurance. They're going to be doing some patching up and stuff. That's, that is relatively major, rehabbing. It's not like coming out here and pressure washing. Pressure washing is one thing.
But I think in this instance, what you do is you put out for pre-qualified bidders. You create that list, and then you put out the project.
So it's an invitation to bid, basically, as opposed to...
But you were saying, can I call people?
No one's to bid.
This gives you the ability to be like, hey, I'm looking specifically, and instead of like, maybe hoping for a smaller company to come in, you might have to call the bigger people to say, I, because they might not be looking at the bid market anyway.
I mean, I'm trying to think of what this really does for us, this... The 20,000 there for invitation.
If we piecemealed the backside of the building here, but if we said, we want whatever, whatever the company that deals with, like, mold and asbestos and every, like, I don't know, I'm trying to think of...
Any one of those environmental places.
Environmental, instead, we kind of like piecemealed it, and we had electricians come out and do it. We could have just said, hey, we want you to come in here, like, they're a big firm, big insurance. What's it going to cost? And it probably would have cost a lot, but...
Yeah, because you would hire the clerk of works and all that stuff.
And then, if everybody reads through, we do have the, we have done this, I believe, but for local advantage. Town make every effort to purchase from businesses located within the town and local area. If the purchase fits into the category of best overall value, which we've done with, like, Wilder Flooring, which has done a lot of our work. Who are huge supporters of NYA and other rec programs and stuff like that. So I don't know if there's too much else we gotta... I just want to make sure that 20 fits in with our CIP ideas, but that's like...
Yeah, I'm not sure how that...
If we're going to say we're going to rehab the old fire station to be less leaky and whatever, that is definitely going to exceed 20.
Right. But it'll be in the CIP anyway, if...
Correct. Which is at 15.
Right.
Right.
So I guess it covers it all.
It's a common, it's another common piece in a lot of the other purchasing policies.
20, you said?
20 to 25,000 for that different, for, they specifically call out for, like, reconstruction, construction. Major reconstruction. They just have a different process potentially. One of them doesn't, but two of the other ones do.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just not sure that we even need that section, really. And I'm not sure it buys us much, you know?
Well, it just gives you an opportunity to not have to go to just sealed bids. You can, again, you're inviting specific companies.
That you feel could handle the job.
Because I mean, here it could have an invitation to bid, so it's sort of, you know...
Do you think it needs to be changed? I'm just highlighting it. I'm just reading it more in depth right now, and saw it was different.
I don't really see any need for it to change.
Okay. We're just trying to, I mean, it's a tool for you to be able to, like, help move things along and be more efficient if need be, so. I would say what I believe, that that recycling center building needs is going to fall under seven. I think that we're just going to have to, like, you know, the wood's going to require more than just drawing some paint on it. It's going to require some sealing and replacing of some trim pieces, so. We might as well call somebody, get a real price, and say, yep, this is too expensive. Let's put it on to CIP and try to get it addressed through a warrant article or something like that.
Anything else?
I'm good with just changing those limits.
On to town beach rules, which need to be updated.
So what I've provided you tonight is just the memorandum that Courtney had provided on September 22nd of '23. This is the last time they came before you, for any updated review or change. And these are reflective on the signage that's down there.
I would only say potentially adding to the second bullet, cars must show a municipal sticker, subject to fine or whatever. You have to put the dollar amount in case I change this one, not always chasing signs, but potentially.
Do, I mean, do we keep the lifeguard piece in there? Because this is for being posted on the website. I'm not talking about the signs, but, because we don't have... Just add it if you end up having lifeguards available. Maybe add something in there about it, but...
You've seen, just cut scratches.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's probably good to have, just in case we do have a lifeguard.
Mm-hmm. Because this is going to be on the website.
Right.
So we don't have lifeguards.
Right. I know we don't, but so it says, when there are lifeguards at the beach. It doesn't say there are lifeguards at the beach.
But it gives you an impression there might be.
Well, who knows, one year or something, we may have a lifeguard again.
Well, that's what we're saying.
At that point, we add it back in, then. We haven't had, 2018 or 19 is the last time we had lifeguards down there?
Yes, I know, but I don't want to have a lifeguard show up and then say something happens.
But then we can just add it back in.
Yeah, well, then you have to add it. You have to remember to add it back in.
You have to review this every year.
I don't think you have to add that. I mean, swim at your own risk. And at some point, I would even say, like, swimming inside the swim, I mean, you can swim outside the swim lines, but that's, again, at your own risk.
Right.
But I don't even, the lifeguard chair's not up there anymore, correct? That's been removed.
It's in the shed, right?
Get rid of that.
It ends up in the water.
It likes to swim.
How does that happen?
Need something to jump off of.
Must be those snakes. Yeah, I feel like we could get rid of the lifeguard stuff for the website.
See, I would be in favor of just leaving it, because I think it's safer now.
The lifeguard should know his responsibility. If the lifeguard goes, they're going to know their responsibility. So by not potentially leaving a, hey, there could be somebody here to watch you, if you don't even have that in there, because realistically, there's not going to be anybody there. You don't want to, we don't even want to provide the illusion that our attendant now is there in some form of fashion, which I know she was in the past. But we don't want to even, like, allude that she's there for some form of life-saving.
To watch kids or...
She is a town employee who can help call in an emergency, but we kind of want everything to be like, this is on you. You going in the water? You better be paying attention to your kids, like.
Yeah.
And again, you could.
Well, right, but... Well, we have to make sure we review it before the beach opens, then.
That would be a good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's part of it.
Yeah, I'd get rid of all the lifeguard stuff.
But if you take it off, does that mean we have to change all the signs again?
Well, I think this is just for the website. Again, I'm not saying to change and purchase all new signs down there.
Nobody reads those signs anyway.
Correct.
I agree.
Well, I'm sorry, what'd you say, Robin?
There's no lifeguard on duty, swim at your own risk, like the sign says, and it goes more important for people to know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd be happy with getting rid of seal.
Well, maybe we should change that bullet, number three, to say, no lifeguard on duty, swim at your own risk.
Yeah. If you want to have the word lifeguard in there, and we can work that out, it sounds good to me. We'll get lifeguard in there for you, Mr....
It's like that dollar thing.
Is it one that you can't hold your breath for 20 seconds, that take it off? That was a real thing. I was like, what is that?
What? Hold your breath for 20 seconds for what? For what?
If you can't hold your breath for 20 seconds, don't be swimming.
Don't swim. Oh.
Oh. Interesting.
No, no, one of the items of confusion was her, were the bicycles on the access trail?
Yes.
So we have a...
Where is that written? That was under the agreement, so this agreement?
No, the MOU, for the use of the...
Does that say?
Only when the gates close.
That's how that was written.
And I think it said pedestrian, no feet.
It says foot traffic or bicycles.
When closed.
I stuck my nose into that because I heard from someone who said, who had gotten stopped by Navea and said bicycles aren't allowed. I had interpreted it differently, could be wrong totally, that bicycles and pedestrians weren't allowed when the gate was closed.
That was my understanding as well.
Otherwise, that's how I understood it, and that Navea had just misunderstood. But apparently, it's more complicated than that.
As it is.
I mean, I think it's kind of tough if you have permit parking, and people are coming down on bikes, how do you...
Well, obviously, they're coming from out of town usually.
Right, right. Yeah, if they're coming, if they're riding a bike. So my problem is, you're allowed to be there at 12, at 12 years old, at the beach, unsupervised. So...
How's it getting now?
Driving a car.
Exactly. How's they, you're going to drive a car?
I've read the stories, man. Hang on to those.
It happens. You've done that, Tim?
Yeah, no. I've read the stories. I said, I didn't tell the story.
And I understand the road's very narrow. It's not that narrow. However, I would see more accidents happen by two vehicles than a walker in a vehicle or a bike in a vehicle, because you can usually hear, if you walk in, you know a car's coming. So would I step off the road? Personally, I would step off the road. Can I speak for a 12-year-old kid? No.
With his AirPods in.
Right.
Right. And, I mean, they shouldn't be wearing AirPods, riding a bicycle, because that's frowned upon. But, I mean, yes, I can see, I can, I know. I can see, like, people smacking mirrors because it's narrow. That's, I mean, you're not, you're not going down that path at any speed. Right.
Whoever's got the best area to pull over, that's what usually happens.
Yeah, come across another car on that road, and it didn't turn into, like, a giant catastrophe. We managed, and we drove by each other. And I believe the intent of a natural recreation area, again, a very big thing for town, is bike and pedestrian traffic. And I believe it only says when the gate is closed. I don't, do you have it up, Ellen?
I'm pulling it up right now.
When closed, I think.
When closed, but I agree, if we're allowing people to come, and if they live nearby, and then you're being like, I don't have a bike, my bike broke. And they're like, I still just want to go to the beach. Like, I think we should be...
Encouraging.
Right. I mean, and, and kids, right, kids that are 12 to driver's license. You know, I'm not going to say 16, because it could be, like, whatever.
Maybe 16 and under should be supervised.
Well, that's a different, that's a different issue, but our current rules say 12.
Yeah, 12-year-olds probably more responsible than a 16-year-old.
Yeah, probably are. And I remember riding my bike to the town beach, not this one, but doing the same thing. Riding my bike to the town beach in the summer, because I could.
The access agreement specifies...
We had no earbuds at that point.
The trail shall be used only for passing through to access the town property. No pets, foot traffic, watercraft, or recreational vehicles shall be allowed at any time. So it's irregardless of whether the gates open or closed. So foot traffic is off.
Foot traffic is off. Have to be on a bicycle.
I have to be on a bicycle.
And the girl was probably 17 or 18 that did ride her mountain bike down.
Yeah.
And she was just laying on the beach, and she went a little once, and that was it.
Were you saying you can't walk down to the beach?
Correct. Which, in my mind, I had interpreted that as that people were sliding around the gate, thinking it meant that you just couldn't drive a car down there, but, you know, during off-hours when the gate was closed, you could sneak around.
I think one of the issues with people walking, I know this was last year, but, is that they're not, they're walking down, but then they're also veering off of the...
Right, staying off.
Off the trail. And it's not a recreational trail.
Right.
It's an access trail to the beach, which is a recreation area.
If we could count on people just using it for an access trail, and just staying off the private property.
And maybe we need to clarify that with the furnels.
I think the new signs will help, because it definitely says, be respectful of home property and homeowner. Like, it really does.
Yeah, be respectful of, yeah, I like those.
Yeah.
They're not even ugly. They're nice-looking signs. But we tried to keep them natural to the trail.
Right.
But just so people can now walk in that road.
Yes, that's what she's saying.
Right. So, I mean, maybe we need to clarify that, you know? We can get a clarification, just...
That's how the agreement was signed last year, Steve. And it's not, and continued this year, but it's not new to right now. Just his, look on his face was, we were just cutting it off.
I wouldn't like putting up the age, that's for sure.
Twelve-year-old supervised, just...
I agree. The 12-years-old was definitely a role when we had guards and we had full staff down there every single day. And that was, you know, over 10 years ago. So that is a, that worries me, as a director of that part, but...
It worries me as a parent.
Well, yeah. I mean, you'd like to think parents would know where their kids are, but we don't.
Kids in that area of my own bike down through Flutter, make their way over there, and go down and spend an hour or two at the beach with friends, and they, no harm was created. Not saying everybody's kids that way, but it's a...
I, I agree that we start taking away, you know, these things for the kids to do, because somebody else wants to impose their rules on somebody else's kids. And I think parents need to be parents and should allow or disallow their children, you know, based on them being the parents, so.
Well, I think there are legit safety concerns, you know, for sure. And none of us want anything to happen to anybody, no matter how you're parenting or not. But I, I was surprised that bicycling, I can see, you know, you can't just ride your bike or walk and cross the dam and go into the woods and all, but if you use your feet or a bicycle to access the beach, that's how I had interpreted it. So I understand why there's confusion. It's not a hill I'm going to die on about whether you allow it or not.
No, you can. Bicycles are allowed. Foot traffic is not allowed. Bicycles are allowed.
That's right. It doesn't, it doesn't exclude bicycles. It does exclude foot traffic.
So then, I guess, what are, what's the enforcement for residents only, then?
It's a rule we're asking them to abide by.
If she, if she asks, I mean, I don't, this says cars must show a municipal sticker. It doesn't say people.
Right.
It is for town residents. I, I think, the car thing is really for the out-of-towners, because, I mean, they're generally not biking in. And I, I mean, maybe if some guy's doing, practicing for the Pan Mass Challenge and is putting on 50 miles, and he wants to cool off, I'm probably okay with it, but...
But the out-of-town cars are, you know, for the six-packs or twelve-packs of beer crowd and the people from out of town. I mean, I, I'd like to see bikes there, but-
It's also less parking problems.
It's true, exactly, yeah. They're not-
You say no bikes, people are doing their car, and then there's, there could potentially be, I haven't seen any now, but- And no biking is a new rule this year supposedly, so-
I don't think it's new. It's just an interpretation of the reading.
Right.
Where the punctuation is.
So, is there biking or not?
Yes.
We're still discussing, but currently as written, yes.
Okay. Now, in my heyday, when I, I actually ran from dam to dam, and I actually ran from Dollar Dam to Drow's Dam.
You went over one of those dams, too.
And I actually ran that load. I, my job is not allowed either. Interesting, okay.
So-
That is something we'll have to address next year. We can't, I mean, or we can look to try to amend that, but that's, as written right now, the trail access says-
No.
No foot traffic. There were specific issues mentioned of people walking.
Right, and they, because they people wander off.
Right, and wandering off, but-
Particularly, you know, like, walking their dog down there or something like that.
Right, and I, and I really think those references were to off-hours, you know, but they were walking their dogs and stuff like that, and definitely no dogs are allowed, and that's-
Yeah, people just fall into-
There's no dogs, wait.
Definitely no dogs.
And the attendant also would ask if someone rode a bike in. Are you a Nottingham resident?
Right, right, when she's there, yeah.
Which, I mean-
So, let's get going.
Yeah.
So, I will update this to change any access, or any reference to road, change that to access trail.
Yeah.
Add that they're subject to applicable fine for those that don't adhere to showing a municipal sticker parking. No lifeguard at duty, swim at your own risk, remove other reference to when lifeguards are-
Yeah, stay off the lifeguard.
So, the next one down, the thunder and lightning swim area will be closed for thirty minutes. It says, when lifeguards are on duty, so-
Again, if you're use at your own risk.
Yeah, I mean, I would hope that's common sense, but I don't think it is.
So, you can scratch that whole bullet?
Yeah. So, like, those three button bullets, when there are lifeguards at the beach, stay off the lifeguard char, char, chair, and in case of thunder and lightning, just remove those.
Stay off the lifeguard chair, because it's not out anyway.
So, you're removing lifeguard?
Yeah, anything that-
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Because it gives you the illusion that's a-
It does, yeah. People just see lifeguard and not-
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
We doing special events?
Where are the websites?
Um, will be under the town beach section, which is under parks and recreation.
Thank you.
Just that one little section.
Special events?
Yeah, did you guys have an opportunity to review the special events?
I'm good with the way it's written. I don't know that way been, well, now that we added the 501(c), I'm all right with it.
Right, yeah, no, I think that's good.
And I did change the formatting a little bit, just to kind of keep it in line with the updated ones that we've been doing. It's very wordy.
So, do we need-
It is very wordy for what it is.
So, do we want to have this one completely approved then?
Yeah, we just need a motion.
All right, I'll make a motion.
Wait, a quick question, Ellen. The events, the staff and select board review-
We changed it from a hundred to fifty.
Right, but then over here, did we need, the fee-
We didn't change the fee.
We didn't change the fee.
That was what we-
There was still no fee up to a hundred.
Right.
Sometimes we, I can remember, we make changes in one spot to the other. Usually, everything lines up, so I'm just making sure.
I think, I, I think the, reducing it to, like, before this, the town administrator had the authority to approve events up to a hundred in attendance. This was to be able to get the notification process out there for any event that had fifty or more attendees. Then what we're gonna do is, we're gonna put notice of the application, we're gonna post it to the town's website and other posting locations in advance of it hitting your agenda.
Right.
Great.
There's no additional fee required.
Right, that's why we changed only that one spot.
Correct.
So, it's only to fifty people?
Um, fifty people, fifty attendees or more will go on the select board's agenda, and there'll be advanced notifications. So, anybody that could be impacted by the event will have the opportunity to attend and hear or provide their comment on it.
There's still- Okay, yeah, under definition, special events do not include private family events, weddings, funerals, graduations.
Oh, actually, I do have one question on this whole thing.
There's no lifeguard.
But, um, what if the event is at the state park?
Side of our jurisdiction.
And they'd have to apply for something.
I, I, well, right, I'm just-
Not our property.
Right, I know it's not our property, but-
But it's in our town.
It's in our town. This is a town, this is a town policy. The state park is within our town, but I don't know how that jurisdiction, kind of, it was one of the things I was-
I think they laugh at you and tell you-
Right. I, I, I figured that was probably the answer, Matt, but-
Yeah, but you're right.
I just wanted to ask the question.
What happens if, I mean, do, do they allow weddings at the park?
Yes.
Yeah.
And if they have a large wedding?
PLA.
And they would follow it. I mean, the police department has a special duty agreement with the state for-
Fourth of July and certain, yeah, certain holidays.
I guess, yeah, PLA, that's something.
Right, the PLA, that's what made me think about it, was the PLA meeting there last weekend was more than a hundred people.
Yeah.
A hundred and twenty-seven.
A hundred and twenty-seven? And, I mean, it is a 501(c)(3), so, you know, the fee would be waived anyway, but-
But it, as a town, it's your responsibility to protect public health, safety, and welfare.
Right.
So, that is an event that could come in question. We could notify the state and let them know that there is an ordinance in effect, and ask that they adhere to it, whether or not they do from that point.
I guess that's all we could do, and see what they say, but-
This is one I couldn't find from the towns.
You could find-
The special events.
Yeah, I couldn't find-
Oh, no?
The local towns that have.
Um, other towns might refer to them as like an outdoor event ordinance. That's where I've seen most of them.
Instead of special?
Usually, it's only on town property.
Right.
I bet Fremont has something.
I don't think they do.
Really?
Unless it's on town property. And I don't think they charge anyone.
So, you'll bring it up to the state?
I know Raymond does, if you're using the-
So, she'll bring it up, she'll bring it up to the state.
Okay. So, I'm okay with the policy, anyway.
Get a motion?
All right, I'll make a motion to accept the town of Nottingham special events license policy-
I'll second it.
With the date of today, whatever it is, sixteenth of June, twenty twenty-five.
Steve seconded and thirded it. Get an emotion?
Step the door.
A motion.
Right, let's not talk about this for an hour.
A motion at a second, roll call vote.
Hi, Steve Walts.
Hi, John Decker.
Hi, Tim Debrio.
Hi, Mike Schrillen.
Hi, Charlotte Five.
Motion carries.
No lifeguard?
No lifeguard.
No lifeguard.
Not even at the state park?
Which, my, they've had trouble use, use that, I know.
Yeah.
And they haven't lifeguarded for it.
Had to get.
Twenty years, probably.
Well, that was interesting. I was in, in Wall of Sands last week, United States apparently can hire lifeguards for the coast, and that's what it was.
Ocean.
That's a better job, is that?
Who doesn't want to work at the beach?
What?
Who doesn't want to work at the beach?
Lovely.
So-
SRPC membership municipal dues?
Yes.
Do you want to cover that?
I, I would recommend that we join, um, the SRPC, so that the year starts July one. Uh, their dues are going up, and, so they're going up basically ten and or twenty bucks an hour, depending on how, there's, um, how you look at it. So-
Yeah, it's a ten percent markup, but then-
So, there, there currently hasn't been a markup for our planner, for our non, non, but they're going up in rates, and then they're imply, applying this markup value of ten dollars.
Ten percent.
Well, it says ten percent, but it's, the rate is ten dollars different, so I don't know why it says ten percent. It says ten percent, but it also says ten dollars. Or it shows ten dollars in the fee structure. So, anyway, I would recommend that we-
Did that get brought up in a deliberative session?
What?
It got brought up throughout the budget season.
Budget season.
And was removed.
It was added into the planning board's budget, but then to meet the four percent tax cap, it was one of the items that was reduced.
Yeah. So, anyway, I would recommend that we join and pay the, what is it, six thousand something, almost seven thousand dollars, because it's basically going to pay for itself in fees for our planner anyway.
And in total agreement?
So, the question is, is there room in the budget?
Right.
Well-
That is the true question.
That's the true question. One way or another?
Do we wait until we-
Do you, you're gonna have your second quarter review coming up at your next meeting in July. I, I know that that's gonna be the start of the fiscal year, and I had already notified SRPC that we didn't have money budgeted or allocated in the twenty-five budget, so we weren't gonna be proceeding forward, but I can reach out to Jen and just say, you know, this is an ongoing discussion, just based on your fees increase and the need for additional services with new planning board membership. It's being reconsidered after the July one date, and see if they can allow us that.
Because if anything, you could bring it up in the next, oh, we're in the next meeting, I'm sorry.
We are.
This is one of the odd ones where we-
You have a three-week-
We have a long break until the next meeting.
Yeah, I would say we have to, we need to review the budget.
I, yeah, I mean, I-
Well, how much did we have on the various budget lines?
There's like a, I think there's twenty-two thousand dollars in the planner line item, which covers the circuit rider, the end, the way that Jen, Jen followed up with an email that I provided on the backside of my report, because it came in, um-
This one here?
Came in Thursday at two o'clock. So, she said, circuit rider contracts for non-dues-paying communities will now be ninety-five dollars an hour. This will be a twenty-dollar-an-hour increase for Nottingham. Um, so that equates to two-hundred-and-twenty-six hours, or eighteen to nineteen hours per month for Blair to attend and do all the, the plan reviews and everything that he's already working on. So, we would be limited to that amount for the budget, but if we were dues-paying member, we'd obviously be looking at that twenty-dollar-an-hour rate reduction, which would give us more hours per month, plus we'd get all the other benefits that were outlined.
It would only be, so it's gonna go up ten dollars no matter what, it sounds like?
True.
That was my understanding. It's going up ten dollars no matter what?
According to the rate sheet, yes, but what she's saying is that Nottingham was not paying the additional increase, like, we're still getting the dues.
We were getting the due, the previous dues rate. Now, the dues rate is going up ten dollars, and then the non-dues rate is going up ten dollars on top of that.
Right.
Because we were budgeted and were dues last year.
No.
No.
No, because we were the default budget.
And it's a twenty-dollar-an-hour increase for non-dues-paying members for the services.
So, we did, we did have dues paid in twenty-three. It was budgeted in twenty-four, but then when we got, when we had the default budget passed, then the dues went away.
Well, because we knew that we were getting the same rate, so the dues weren't really helping us. Now-
Well, the comment was, it didn't need drew at every meeting. So, it didn't make sense.
Right.
That we'd just use them when we needed them.
Right.
But that's never been the case.
That's never been the case. It's like, he's always there, and he's always needed. He's doing-
It's a critical time.
Right, he's doing a report on everything each, you know, so, I mean, we don't have a in-house planner, so he is our planner.
Really critical.
So, we'll review the budget at the next, until July.
And I'll reach out to Jen in the meantime and just let her know.
That's July seventh.
Yes.
I figured we would scrounge it up someplace.
I just want to make sure we know we've got room to scrouge that.
Maybe throw, to anybody who'd like to talk about that, too. Like, the planning board, if, like, somebody would want to come and-
If they want to have a representative.
Yeah.
I know you're here, but if there's somebody else, or anybody wants to talk about it to help explain.
Facilities committee, so, I couldn't find it in the minutes, but I know we, I thought we had talked about this. Um, we had talked about having a recreation, I mean, a, um, not a recreation, sorry, recycling committee to sort of help in assist with recycling. Did you take that?
I said I would go on a facilities committee.
What was it, facilities you said?
It was a facilities, but-
So-
And I actually did go to the, whatever that workshop was the other day.
The Friday one at SRPC.
The SRPC facilities, underutilized facilities or buildings thing, which was actually pretty good, and I talked to-
Was there an overutilized one?
No, there was not an overutilized one. Um, but it did talk a lot about, you know, figuring out what you want to do with these things, and then, um, you know, grant funding and stuff like that, and pursuing that. But, yeah, the biggest thing is to have a decision and get feedback on what to do with these buildings.
Right.
And it's, you know, it really talked about, um, you know, getting that feedback and getting, you know, plans out, getting the information out to people of what you want to do, or where you want to go, or just soliciting ideas.
So, I think the goal, what we had talked about, is having sort of what your committee had done two years ago.
It's a shame that it broke up, that we sort of had that little, you know, year-long mandate, but it really should have gone out, yeah.
Right, and just have, whether it's quarterly, whatever it might be, is just to me, review, where's the town at with progress, and the four-page list of things that we wanted to do, um, you know, what other building opportunities are there? If we, you know, this back of this building, you know?
The back of this building, the, the old firehouse.
Right, exactly.
Things like that.
So, I think, and then continuing to review maintenance items with, you know?
Yeah, like, keep it at the forefront, because it's been such an issue that maintenance has not happened.
You know, I was talking to Ellen a couple weeks ago, and they've implemented a, not a server.
Yeah, it's, um, it's a, it's the planner app, it's built into Microsoft three sixty-five. So, what we've done is, we've actually created a task list where we can go and, or any, whoever, I have it assigned right now to the department heads, but if there's an issue that they notice, like, if an outlet's broken, you can put it on there on a task list, and then we can see live where it is. Um, like, if I've contacted the electrician.
That's good, yeah.
Yep, so, and it will also give us the ability to generate a report for each facility of what is still outstanding or what needs to be accomplished or budgeted for in future years. Um, so, it's, it's very basic, it's-
Well, it's much better than just a hit and miss that we had before, you know? Like, my uncle could replace that doorknob, too.
Basically, a help ticket.
Exactly, that's exactly what it is.
And at least it's out there and says, okay, this is what needs to be done.
Instead of somebody mentioning to me that the toilet's not flushing, I did that.
I liked it. Better than patching it, because what's gonna happen?
Yeah, I'd love to, I'd love to see the facilities committee, um, don't look at that, don't look at it.
I mean, that was, that was hanging two weeks ago.
And, um, and get some fresh blood. I, I don't thi, I'd be interested in doing it again. Um, I'm not sure the other folks-
We can always reach back out to the, the prior committee members and see if they still want to be involved.
And I don't think it's going to be the load of work that it was.
No, 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 no.
The basis is there, it's just a matter of keeping forward progress.
But I hate to see that whole thing just, you know, disappear.
Right.
No, and to be honest, as part of the master planning committee, one of the chapters is facilities, and so we're updating that, too, so it would be timely to-
And I think that's really a good part of it, and now that the master plan committee is into its subcommittees, you know, maybe I should get involved with the facility piece of it.
It sounds, you want to be involved, too? Do you want to be involved, too, or?
Yeah, I would like to, yeah.
So, and maybe that would be the start.
That's my chapter, so.
That's your chapter? That's your chapter? Uh-oh, then we have to have an official meeting.
You're right.
Okay, so I will reach out to the former members, see if they're ready to revitalize the committee and-
Should you restructure the committee, though? Should you restructure the committee, though? Who was on it before?
You should open it up, I think, yeah.
Anybody.
I mean, your purpose is going to change, because
Right.
Who else is in that chapter with you, Tim? Just you, you yourself? So it's just us, huh?
Yeah. I'm sure I could get other members of the committee involved, if we wanted more people involved, so
I mean, I think, like, Skip would be a candidate that he would wanna be involved. Um, you know, at least he, he was there from the CIP repres- you know, part of that, as well as, um, Adam Ryan was there as well. And Sue Levinson was there from the school.
So I'd say any meetings that we have would just keep to two of us.
Keep two of us?
Yes.
That's fine.
Yes.
Yeah, two active members, and then somebody serves as an alternate, if one of you can't make it.
Yeah, that's good.
Skip, Adam Ryan, and who was the other one that you said?
Sue Levinson.
Levinson, thank you. Okay.
Oh, she's not cussing me out for volunteering.
Secret to any committee is keep it small.
Right.
What's your theory, Anderson?
Yes, Gary Anderson, Eric Dennis, um
Paul Delair.
Paul Delair, Barbara Draper, and myself.
If you can keep it to like, four people, I think that would be ultimate.
You want an odd number for
Yeah.
Voting.
Five people.
Five, no more than five.
Five is a good number.
Thanks for bringing that back up.
Because you get too big, everybody's get toots. Even five people, sometimes, like tonight, we get off on a tangent.
No, lifeguard. Any action items for our next meeting?
I have second quarter budget review, um, we'll continue the tax-dated property review, uh, purchasing policy update, uh, SRPC dues, once we go through the budget review. And hopefully an update on the facilities committee.
Okay.
I think that's plenty.
Sound good. Um, any public comment? No, okay.
We do, uh, reserve that to
We will be going into non-public, so after our non-public, we'll be, uh, opening back up the public meeting to close the meeting, but did I get a motion to go to non-public?
I'll make a motion to move into non-public, per RSA ninety-one dash three col- ninety-one dash A colon three two C.
I'll second.
A motion and a second to go into non-public, roll call vote.
Aye, Steve Walsh.
Aye, John Decker.
Aye, Tim Debrio.
Aye, Mike Schrillen.
Aye, Charlotte, five.
Good night, Nottingham.